There we go. We're good?
Yes.
All right. Uh, start again. Good evening, everybody. We are here today for our regular monthly meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. This is for April two thousand twenty-one.
We're good?
And, uh, we started with the pledge.
We are here today for our regular monthly meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. This is for April two thousand twenty-one.
That didn't sound that good the first time either.
No, I was...
You're fine.
Yeah, you're fine.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, members present, we have Doug Scriber, Michael Albert, Mitch Boyer, David Strunk, and myself. So, we do have a quorum. Uh, we are missing, uh, Robert Moses, who had said he would probably not be able to attend this evening. First, uh, item, uh, let's take a look at the meeting minutes from March eleven, two thousand twenty-one. Anybody see anything that needs to be addressed?
I think a motion will accept the minutes as written.
All right, they have a motion to accept the minutes from March eleven by David Strunk, seconded by Doug Scriber. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, these minutes.
Stand.
Okay, one is tensioned, Michael Albert, because he was not present. All right, next. Plans upon which to ask?
Number five, please, the number five.
Uh, public comments on the...any public comments on the agenda?
It appears not.
Thank you, I forgot about that. All right, plans. We have the preliminary minor subdivision plan, the lands of Andrew Shakaitis. That's this one. Now, I was just looking at it here. We have a few...we have a few pieces here in our packet. We have the Monroe County Planning Commission letter from March, uh, dated March seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. The Shakaitis' is engineer, the Hanover Engineering, uh, letter of March twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, and their application for...and the application of Andrew Shakaitis for this, uh, minor subdivision.
Yes, the chair may just interrupt for a moment, I'm not sure if I heard correctly. The Hanover Engineering review is the Planning Commission, Monroe County Planning Commission, engineer review.
Yeah, we have the Monroe County Planning Commission, the Hanover Engineering.
Yeah, that's Monroe County engineer.
Oh, my...okay, I misspoke, yes, Monroe County.
I don't know, did you say it was, or did you...
No, I actually said it incorrectly.
Okay, so, all right, good.
Yeah, I actually said it...I said it improperly.
Got it.
And their application for the subdivision. And then we have the March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, uh, review of Boucher and James, John Tressler. John, why don't we go through that here before we...there you go. You've done your review, why don't you...why don't you tell us, please?
Yeah, uh, I can go through line item by line item if you would like. Um, it's a pretty straightforward two lots, subdivision.
Yeah.
There's an existing dwelling on one lot, uh, there's a second lot. Most of our comments are really geared for putting some additional information on the plan that's required by the ordinance.
Yeah, I saw, it looks like there's some slope information.
Right, slope information, some comments. Uh, we want to check lot closures. Um, what could we say about a planning module?
We'll have to find out about planning module for that, for the new lot. All right.
What is that, a planning module?
Where?
What is that?
Planning module, uh, shows that they've, uh, done sewage testing on the lot.
Okay.
And that it's...that they found a site that's suitable for a subdivision.
Yeah, they're gonna cut it off, it has to be suitable.
Right. And, uh, there's other con...you know, other miscellaneous comments, but nothing that I would think would be a deal breaker. If you want me to go through a line item by line item with the chairman, I will.
Yeah, well, let's take one...well, let's take...let's take one second here. And look, this is the existing...this is the existing driveway that's on here, is that it? In between the two lots, is that it?
They opened it up.
I'm trying to see exactly where I am here. So, I can see which piece there. Anybody here for this plan? For the Shakaitis subdivision?
No, not here.
Okay. Yeah, the Hidden Valley Drive, okay. Because the Hidden Valley Drive went back to, uh, Phil Pope's old, uh, Christmas tree farm. So, that's what this is.
So, you...you guys know that better than myself.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I'm talking about the same...just the same driveway.
Okay.
Right, because one house is on one side, the chalet is on the other side, where Nancy Shakaitis lived until she just recently passed. That must be this one. Joe and Nancy Shakaitis must be this one. All right. Let me ask you this, John. Is there anything particularly noteworthy in your...in your review? I mean, I saw that it's subject to a few other, you know, a few things, you know, like I said, the, uh...
You know, look, the most, as Mr. Karasak pointed out, usually the most critical comments would be zoning, let's go through those.
Yes, let's go through the zoning.
Uh... Number...comment number one. Proposed lot number two shows areas for on-lot sewage disposal systems was suggested development. Uh, the plan shall note the intent to develop proposal lot number two, propose, uh, use. We assume it's residential, but the plan should say that.
Okay, yeah, because it's our one anyway in here, right.
Do you need to have that subdivision, I didn't think you needed to...
You should show what...yeah, you have to tell what the use is. I mean, if you're going to try to do something that's not permitted, we need to know that.
Well, of course, lots of I came when they want to do that, I wanted to ensure it.
Well, I think the comment, though, is that they've sewer tested the lot.
They've done a sewer test, got the...
So, they're showing...
Showing it, too.
That they just had to do that.
So, it's...
I think if they did sewer test, I think we'd have the comment.
I got you, I got you, okay.
Okay. All right, number two.
Number two, I think they've got the setbacks wrong. We're asking them to correct those. Uh, at this stage, it doesn't affect anything.
But it needs to be corrected.
But it needs to be corrected.
All right.
And we want them to put the permitted coverage, you know, impervious surface, et cetera, uh, and allowable heights on the plan, so that's when they either sell it, or someone comes in to build on the lot, that information is...
Yeah, because it's gonna be a recorded plan.
Right. Uh, number four is where we get into the slopes. Uh, I don't know that there's any steep slopes on here. We did a quick calculation, it looks like there might be a thirteen percent slope, uh, on the land. Uh, and if there's nothing greater than thirteen, then they're probably okay, but their surveyor should confirm that for us.
All right.
Uh, let's see. And that's...that's basically it for the...for the zoning comments. So, I don't think that there's anything here that's going to preclude this subdivision moving forward from the zoning standpoint.
Does lot two...proposed lot two, is that only...is the only access out on Hidden Valley Drive, is that it?
Um, yes, I guess so.
Would it allow them to do that if we don't have access to a public road? It's not a public drive.
It's a private, private road.
It's a private road. It's no different than mine, Boyer Lane.
What is the new lot, Scott?
I don't think you can cut it off if it doesn't have access to an existing public right-of-way. This is a private right-of-way.
This is definitely truly commercial, right?
No, residential, too.
I don't know.
Some kind of...I mean, it's agreement for the road that would allow them to...
I don't think it matters.
On the private road.
It doesn't...I don't think it matters, because you couldn't cut...you couldn't cut my piece off in the...into the smaller piece, because you couldn't add more houses on an existing private road. I thought you had it here.
Well, is that because of a deed restriction within your development?
No.
No.
Where...where's it?
Am I incorrect?
I don't know anything for including someone from subdividing on private road. Um, I think that if there were written HOA documents that would govern that, they would have to conform with that, but in the absence of any, I don't know of anything that's precluded unless...perhaps I should check our ordinance one more time, which I didn't think of at the time, unless it says all lots must front on a public road.
For a minor subdivision.
If they must front on a public road, then yes, that would be a problem, which I did not check.
Would you...I only know...I only know that because I've had arguments about that on my road. Would you check on that, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
The point that I did not think of. Now, this...this was, not that it may make any difference, because, uh, it's...it's of record now that it's a private road. It says it formerly was, a township road, five-twenty, but apparently it's been...
What was?
Hidden Valley Drive, private thirty-three foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
Formerly T five-twenty.
Mm.
The T five-twenty is a township designated road.
It was formerly, it's not anymore.
Right, so...
Can we check on that?
Yep, I will.
That's my...that's my only...that's the only thing, because I think you're precluded.
Do we want to table this, or do we have to...
Yeah. I want to table it until it's looked at.
I don't have the comments addressed?
Yeah.
No, you have plenty of time, I, I would suggest you table it.
Yeah, would you?
So I checked that out.
Okay.
And, and the comments are addressed. And the comments should be addressed.
Yes, yes. Let me see if there's anything else before we need to do it. Nothing, the other part with the slopes.
The hallway part?
Yeah.
Yeah. John, you're okay with all the Monroe County planning commission comments?
I, I never got a copy of that, to be honest, until tonight.
Okay.
There's only three comments, so... One related to the driveway, one, the acres being listed incorrectly, so we... More to the second.
I'll make a motion, we table this until the comments have been addressed by the applicant, and if the township engineer has additional time to research the subdivision on a private road.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that particular motion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, so it'll be tabled until the May meeting of the planning commission, the second, I didn't even look. The second, oh, come on. The second Thursday in May will be May thirteen. It'll be, it'll be tabled to the May thirteen, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the planning commission, seven, seven o'clock. All right, we'll put that on there. Okay. All right, next. All right, the Dr. Kahn matter, anybody here for that? All right, this is sketch plan, who's here for that? We got the whole, the whole group here. All right, this matter has been tabled, it's a sketch plan. I'm not bringing my file, why did we table this one? Cause it's a sketch plan, right?
I think so, I have to look at the minutes.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the minutes to make sure.
I don't remember right now. It might have been tabled from once before, cause I don't even see that August, February.
From February. Yeah.
So the applicant or applicant engineer was...
No, they were not.
They were not.
Probably why, because...
They were not.
Without them explaining what they intend to do, it becomes a little more difficult to...
All right. So who, who, who is here for that, everybody, who wants to speak? Okay, well, step up, come on up, whoever's gonna come, come sit up, tell, tell us, tell us about your, it's a sketch plan, so we don't actually have a, a formal subdivision plan, but we do have a sketch plan. What do you, what, what do you want the planning commission to know?
My name's Chris Epps, I live in, uh, Stonegate, uh, which is the subdivision adjacent to this property.
Okay, hang on one second, anybody here for Dr. Kahn? On his behalf?
No.
Oh.
All I know is that we, uh, meeting minutes of last week is...
Yeah.
About, about a, uh, part of a construction project behind our houses.
Yes. Well, it's a sketch plan.
I don't know what a sketch is.
Well, it's actually not even a...
We don't even have anything in front of us.
We don't even really have anything in front of us.
And currently, uh, which I think is more, seems appropriate, it wasn't conform with the zoning.
It didn't conform with the zoning?
Right.
It was our brief to, back in, now I remember, back in February.
Right, it, in order for it to even be considered, it would have to be made part of the, uh, new overlay district.
The ED zone, the economic development zone.
Right, and it's not in that district, and even then, I think there's some shortcomings. Isn't there a twenty-five acre minimum?
Yes, there was a minimum, yes.
And, and, and it's, it's a small, as I recall, I didn't bring my file, but it's like a small medical building or something with a large number of apartment units.
That's correct, yeah, cause it was, it was a small percentage of commercial that wedge in the mix.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Oh, the math that, that, uh, as ED, ED economic, economic development.
Well, this, I remember now, it, there's a difference in opinion and the interpretation of, of that man, they assume that they have the ED zone, so no, you have twenty-five acres.
Ah, yeah, and nobody's here for the...
They weren't here last time either.
They weren't here last time. I gotta say this, I, I, I say we're not spending any more time on it, they're not here to give a, to propose something as an actual plan to go through it, I, you know. Any other...
There was discussion about amending the zoning to allow it under twenty-five acres.
Yeah, and we don't have anything...
That was, and so there was opposition to it on our board, but first of all, my opinion is, it's, it's commercial, it's not residential. They're trying to, with a re- a residential project up there. Under the auspices, under the auspices of a commercial project with residential above it, that's not what it is. So I would not be in favor of the project based on what I know right now.
Okay.
We don't, we also don't have anything to act on.
We don't have anything, we don't have anything to even act on.
The sketch plans is sort of, I get our idea.
An idea? Yeah.
They want me to get our idea on what we think of it, and, or just...
I, I did do a review, but I didn't bring my file, I'm sorry, I think there was a review letter here, lab.
There was.
But it was just on a sketch, I mean, it was a, it was a fairly basic review.
That would be just a, a few reviews, John, it was a lot, you know, it was about ten pages, twelve pages long.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a lo- it was a long review.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I didn't realize, I, when I looked at the agenda, I didn't even see that, somehow I missed that that was on here, so I didn't bring my file, but...
There was review number two.
Yeah.
We didn't, we don't get them in until October, do we?
No. Sometimes we do.
Yeah.
Always, sometimes we do.
No.
Most lately we have. Why make a recommendation that we table this until we have something to look at, something to review?
Okay. Yeah, but, but let me, before you do, let, let us to the chair, let this chairman?
Yes.
Is there any way that we can just give a sense of, of the board as to how we do this thing? I mean, we're sort of...
I'm actually not, so I...
Big one around the edges.
To be, and I, and I'm actually not in, I'm actually really not inclined to give advisory opinions in that fashion. I, I don't, I...
To the applicant.
To the applicant, yeah. You know, I'm not, I'm not interested in, in sort of having those discussions, I, I think if they're going to file something, if Dr. Kahn's going to file something that requires actual review, that's fine, other, we don't... It's one thing to come in here with one week, you know, one month on a sketch, take a look at, you know, okay, this is where we think you're gonna have, you're gonna have to make sure you address these couple of things. And then we, and then we move along, but now we bumped it along, and he's still not here, and so...
They don't have nothing in front of us.
We have nothing in front of us to look at, so I'm not gonna talk about something in the air.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
You know, there's a bunch of people that have one of which, so obviously don't wanna waste our time, but right now, we're basically, or, or no, it's not happening, cause we don't have anything. But do we wanna take five minutes to come, so they can kind of voice their...
You know what, that's, you know, yes, you're here, so, let's limit it to a few minutes, but give us, give us your thoughts, we'll start with you, sir.
Uh, just a, uh...
Just a couple of minutes, and then, then we'll, then we'll go on.
But from what, little I know about it, it's four parts of the area, three-story buildings, apartment complexes, hundred forty-four units, two hundred seventy-five cars. All in the backyard of the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody who is, uh, is living on that property, uh, I don't think there's anybody in this room that wants a, one of the sort of buildings behind their house. Uh, I'm not saying that that land is not to be developed someday, but I, I feel it's an inappropriate use of property because of the amount of people that are gonna be there, and the amount of cars. It, it, it would be nuisance to everybody who's on that, uh, along that property line. The backyard, I'm sure you've heard this before, not my backyard, but it's a project and it's, uh, medical buildings, something like that. Reasonable for, for understand, but something as large as this with the amount of noise and light and, and, uh, whatever types of, uh, other problems that occur. And it would have to be considered by the board seriously. People have, uh, to detect the, the use of it and large high-density residential area.
Thank you, anybody else? Yes, sir. Step up, please. That's all right, we're all a little stiff, it's okay.
Uh, first of all, thank you.
Why don't you give your name here, so we have a...
I'm Woodard Rochay, I live in twenty-eight Stonegate Drive.
Okay.
One of my tenants here now, um, again, I just wanted to bring, I bring a little more to the table, as far as engineering experience and capital construction experience. Uh, six million dollars in the city of New York, I'm a legal engineer, so I kinda have an idea about necessities for environmental impact studies, traffic impact. And opening, because on commuter, and we know when we come off, and are you gonna expand two oh nine? Uh, my first move was to collect up four four seven, to allow, if I live up in Marshes Creek and anywhere, I would call it deeper into two oh nine. And that definitely impact us, and I, you know, not only is there a car and footprint issue, but there's all types of environmental issues. And our, our request is that, for such a drastic change, uh, the use of this land, if it meant it, all these studies, these are informed with and that's taken seriously in ver- in consideration of the width of, you know, we're talking about two oh four seven, a two-lane, two-way road. With additional cars, a lot of the parking, and that the visionary traffic flow, uh, be forced down to people who want to avoid, uh, center. It would definitely impact us, quality of life, the quality of the air we breathe, and I'd just like to, again, thank you for taking all these issues into consideration and even letting us voice out opinions.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, step up, and, uh, please give us your name.
What's the name?
Um, I'm actually here on behalf of my parents, uh, all the sex, um, my dad fell today and had me taken to the hospital, and I literally just got home a half hour ago, so I'm speaking on my parents' behalf. This project would literally be butt right up against the rock of their property, they're at twenty-one Stonegate Drive. They're very concerned because there's a long rock in the area, they are, and their house is nineteen ninety-seven, and the homes were being built, there was tremendous work that's going on. Their concern is this project could have a lot of blasting, there's a lot of rock in the area, what's that gonna do to their foundations? What's that gonna do to their wells, your drinking water, um, light pollution, that's gonna come right into the back of my parents' bedroom, which literally busts up about thirty feet from this property that we're talking about. Um, height of the apartment, um, is there anyone that's gonna be responsible if, if something were to happen to the foundation too? Well, years ago, when Dr. Kahn was gonna put, oh, I think Westfield Medical Center there, um, my parents were able, at that time, they were in the early eighties now, uh, they were able to attend meetings. Um, a bond was gonna be put up at that time to ensure if there was damage to any of the foundations of the homes, or the wells, um, that it would be addressed. These are major concerns, um, I mean, I'm, my dad has a whole list of stuff, I'm not gonna read everything that's going on, cause it sounds like there would be another meeting at another time.
Uh, we're long before there's any approvals, this is way early.
Right, yeah, and so, I mean, he, I like brought him home from the hospital, well, bandaged today. But he was handing, and I didn't really want to even come tonight, cause I'm exhausted, um, but, um, he handed me this, and he said, you are going to the meeting in an hour, aren't you? And I'm like, yes, daddy, I'm going. Um, so, he's talking about water easements that were on the original, um, subdivision land for Stonegate Drive.
Yes.
And two of the water easements are like right exactly where this would be built.
Yeah, the drainage easement.
Yeah, cause he said the house next to that had to be put in a different area as well as the house on the other side.
I see.
Because of these two water easements that come, and they see the wetlands under the roof, so, but yeah, he has the whole list of...
I know, cause they had to pump, they had to pump the water out across Franklin Hill Road to get it over into the...
Right, so...
I know.
He's saying if that's the whole water easement that we serve, how's that gonna affect, if you're gonna want the water to fade, and...
I see.
Lots of concerns, I'm not gonna read the twenty things, any written down.
Well, fortunately, like I said, we do not have an actual plan to act on, it was only a sketch plan.
Not only that, but I'm going over the, the, uh, John's comments, uh, and the big ones all at the beginning were ten acres, and there's a proposal.
Yeah.
Big use development, which requires some better, there's like, well, hearing system would be required.
Okay.
So effectively, and, and when it showed up...
That was from the February meeting, that one, okay.
February meeting, so effectively, there were so many things, and I, I, you guys probably haven't seen these sort of comments.
No, they wouldn't, no.
At the February meeting, but at that time, what was presented would not be allowed, unless there was massive changes or explanation of what was going on, the project as presented was not allowed.
It wa- it just wouldn't fit in with our...
We didn't make that agreement, but we knew that, cause it...
Yeah, we tabled it, cause it's, if they wanna come back, but it would not fit in with our, our zoning reg- subdivision regulation, inland development regulation, uh, scheme for this township. Okay? But I understand, believe me, I understand, thank you. Ma'am?
I'm here, I'm Bridges, and I'm...
Mary Ann Bridges, Bridges, okay.
And I own the property, and I own the road, the floor, the whole, and, um, I wanted to know if, I know originally when the Dixon zones, the house on Franklin Hill, that there was an agreement, the field was then put the road out to the light at the school, and I was wondering if that was going to be addressed. Instead of, you're gonna cut, instead of going out on, where, where it's now, you just cut across and come out by, that's a big major road.
Well, at, at this point, we actually don't have a formal plan to review.
But I just wondered if...
And I would imagine that PennDOT alone would require, because I mean, that's four forty-seven and Franklin Hill's a, like a funky forty-five degree. I, I'm, you know, that was, that was okay seventy-five years ago, but I can't not imagine that PennDOT would allow this kind of thing to happen with a highway occupancy, whatever. It would, it would require some adjustment no matter what.
I know, and, and my, my concern also is the legend, I'm, I'm a solid French, my property, and I'm concerned, I'm retired, and I, you know, my well goes, you know, the, the, and with all the water that would be coming through there, if, you know, if it's in, I mean, do I have to spend, it might, you know, my own money to, that's a big concern, that's all. I know we're family residents, we're all family oriented down that way, and it's just a sad thing that we're gonna have to be like a middle city, so...
Thank you. All right. Um, I don't think we even need to table anything, I think at this point, it's just we, we need to take no further action, there's nothing for us to act on.
Right, a sketch, a sketch plan is different from a, a, a formal submission.
Right.
You do it through the pleasure of the applicant, and the applicant isn't here.
Right.
Make a motion to just remove it from the agenda, that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, actually, I do, actually.
And close the table, and just remove it.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't wanna table it again, I don't wanna come back unless I'm gonna file something new.
If the applicant wants to put it back on, well, then they do whatever, but...
All right, I'll make that motion, I'll make the motion, uh... I thought we got everybody, no? Did I miss you? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there, pardon me.
I, I, you know, I've only been there on the street eight and a half years, and obviously was, but I'm a community citizen, I'm there, I'm tired now, at that corner.
Yes.
It's, it's like, if we have several hundred more people on that street, we'd never get out of it.
I understand. Okay, did I miss anybody, I'm sorry, I didn't see her back there, sorry, Michael. The chairs are blocked. All right, then I say, then I will make the motion that it gets removed from the agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded by, uh, David Strunk, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, last thing. He may, he may, and it'll go through the formal process again the same way. Yep? All right. Now, the last thing on, uh, on the agenda... Now, the last thing on, uh, on the agenda tonight is here really primarily because, um, in a completely unrelated discussion with a legal colleague, uh, I was talking with, uh, they're doing something in Stroud Township with what was the old, um, Penn Hills Resort. And they mentioned that Stroud Township had this dangerous structures ordinance. And we've kicked, we've kicked this thing around. I mean, we did it with, we talked a little bit about it last month with respect to the, uh, uh, the denial of permits and, and so forth that you have...
Out of life ordinance?
No.
Not quite. We talked about it.
We've been talking about it, and this one, the, the only reason I, I set this one around to everybody is because I said, you know, it's happened, Stan, it's hap- you know, occurred. I, I, I was talking with a colleague. And honestly, this isn't the worst thing in the world. And this is really a sort of thing that we have been talking about with structures that have been dilapidated and falling down. And it gives a, you know, it gives a process, and not, you know, not necessarily the easiest process for the township. But we, but we are talking about property rights, and there are constitutional issues regarding the deprivation of property, you know, you know, and, and so forth. And what, what I, what I liked about this is it, it gave, you know, it gave a clear setup of hearing procedures, standards for repair, you know, dan- you know, dangerous buildings, and some enforcement procedures, which we are frankly, Jake, sorely lacking on the enforcement problem. All right, we gotta drop the hammer on some of this stuff, 'cause, you know, this is bullshit what's going on here in this township on some of these things. And once you do a cou- once you drop the hammer on a couple of them, other ones will begin to come into line and conform. It, it just is, you know, I mean, you know, forgive the direct language, but, you know, you know the one that, you know the one that, uh, uh, on the corner of mind. You know, they've, that guy's been operating that Airbnb illegally for two years since we, since we did that. And so, the nice thing about this is it's compared, it's whatever it is, four, five, five pages, and it deals with structures that we have. This, something like this could very easily, for example, take care of knocking down the old massage parlor property that has been sitting there. With the old Close Encounters. From back in your, from back in the age of your dad and me, yes, and mom, yes. Close, the old Close Encounters, but, but you could use it for something like that, or, or other things that were, you know, if they hadn't changed it, say, on business two oh nine, um, with what, what was the old pen and sword that was falling in, you know, that, that kind of. But this is a fairly, I, I mean, I urge the supervisors to take a look at something. This is pointed and straightforward, and it allows for a procedure the township can undertake the work, and then it gets, and then it gets attached to the real estate as a municipal lien. So, if somebody goes and buys it, you know, buy it a tax sale, knock yourself out, but this lien comes attached to it. And if it goes to further than that, to judicial sale, then the township has the ability to step in, and maybe they wanna take over the thing and sell it themselves. There are, there are, I've done a lot of tax work, a lot of ta- real estate tax work, and so it's...
You're talking about abandoned buildings. This is not such an abandoned building.
Dilapidated.
Right, but I mean, that's what I worry about part of this, is like, from what I read one seed.
Yeah.
That opens up, up, uh, if your porch has gaps that are broken, how should we come in and remove that porch?
Right.
That scares me a lot.
Well, and I don't think it frankly, I, I don't think it frankly should in that you can adjust this a bit.
Of course. I, I just wanna highlight, I, I agree with you.
No, I know.
But I think there's overreach in this.
There, there may be overreach. Now, look, this is from forty years ago, and there probably is some overreach in it.
That's right.
But what I liked about it was straightforwardness, and it's implementable.
Are we voting on this tonight, or we...
No, 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 we're not voting on this. I, I only brought it to everybody's attention, because between the last two meetings, I, I did not know about this, 'cause I don't really do municipal work, you know, anymore. And, and I found out about this, I'm like, well, this has some good stuff in it. I, I would really urge the supervisors to take a look at maybe this sort of porch.
Can I offer a blind, just a blinding glimpse of the obvious? Michael's point. Uh, you could extend this to everything, residence, residential zones and commercial. But I really think that the bone in on our real problem is the commercial cars and how they look. And the, and the rundown, dilapidated, and in some cases, stagnant and dangerous structures.
Mm-hmm.
That exist along those paths. Really, to, to start to extend our, uh, purview out into the residential areas, I have to tell you real quick, I was, uh, twelve years and years ago in a township wide, not this township, but on Long Island, township wide building survey. And it, it was, it just opened up a, and worms the likes of which I don't think that town has ever recovered. But basically, we went around and we surveyed, we looked at from the road, different properties, and we labeled them either satisfactory, unsatisfactory, used, or deep, dilapidated. And all of the la- the ones that we marked deep were then brought up before Township Planning Commission and were discussed one by one. It was a arguus, difficult, and it really came back to bite them in the ass, quite frankly.
Well, it's a good thing we're not in Long Island.
But, but that was a town that was bent on enforcing there of what was dilapidated and what was not. About the entire township, like we were too narrow also. On these commercial cars, I think we'd be doing ourselves a favor because...
And I don't think you can do that.
Why can you not do that?
'Cause I don't think you can regulate, I don't think you can regulate that taking of property just for that. You're, 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 I, I think it would have to be township wide. I don't, I don't think it past muster.
Uh, especially in the state constitution.
Yeah, if it's used with liens, does it not also come into the, the tax law and therefore like the uniformity clause?
No. No, no, that, that is a lien. It, we're, we're talking, I'll say for service provided, it'll be more along the line of, of municipal sewer and water lien. Not a, not a general real estate or school district taxation type lien. But I do think it needs to be township wide. And I, and, again, will we uniform, well, uniform people, just off to the side of that. And I don't think you need to go through and survey the entire town. I think you need to pick, you need to pick a few examples, and I think things will then, things will then begin to fall into line. Success will beget some success.
Who's to decide what examples are chosen?
Well, that's gonna be the supervisors. That's how everything is.
I know, it's actually, actually, we said that.
Well, I mean, that, look, that's how it is. I'm not telling you to take this. I'm telling you, this is, I'm telling you, this is, look, we've com- we have complained about things for years. This is something I found that is at least implementable and should at least be dis- should be, uh, discussed hopefully by the supervisors. 'Cause you're the policymaking body, you're the legislative body, that you can at least make some use of something in a usable form. That's the only reason I was bringing this particular one. Much like, uh, what is it, last year, whenever it was, that I, that I talked about, you know, when they were maybe, we were maybe talking about sinus, kinds? And, and I found the one, you know, from, from Williamsburg, Virginia, has a way to have some ide- not to use their whole thing. That's much too onerous for our sort of situation, but it's a way to get some, pluck some ideas in order to, in order to, and that's what I really want with this. I wanna pluck some ideas.
My one, my one, I, I agree with you. I think my one had on, I think having the infrastructure be abandoned makes a lot of things a lot easier, 'cause if you have someone that's actually living, it, and there's health and safety issues, and that's not, there's a risk of it falling off.
Well, but it has to, 'cause there's no other place for it to fall. There's no other, there's no other entity that's going to condemn a piece of real estate for health and safety violations.
There's no health department.
There's no health department except for township. There's nowhere else to go. No. Yeah?
Technically, there's, there was a...
There is a county.
Uh, no, we do not. If, if your, if your municipality doesn't have a health department, it goes to the state, uh, agency department. Yes.
Anyway, well, I was...
There's nowhere else to go with it, Michael. It's either us or nobody.
What are you, uh, I guess, so my question then is, are you worried about, are you worried about abandoned buildings that are falling down, or are we worried about few homes that are, are not well kept or, or both?
We're talking about well kept. We're talking about, you're talking about unsafe and dangerous.
Yeah, that's, that is.
That can mean unheavened.
That can mean...
It can. It could be the guy in Ro- it could be the guy in Ross Township.
My town is damn near dangerous right now. I need, uh, a lot of the township coming in, fighting for that, and, uh, that's...
Yeah. You want the town, you want the township at least bringing it to, yeah, you want township maybe citing you for it and putting it in place.
Then we gotta hire, we gotta hire fifty more zoning...
Yes, we do. We have to hire more zoning people, yes. We do. Amen. I, I make a motion.
And then, and then, we're gonna get that by finding everyone, but then we're gonna become bad township.
No, I make a motion. We gotta get somebody that's gonna do something, yes. We do.
Uh, there's a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I never, I, I was never gonna say, "Oh, we need to hire more zoning," because we're gonna be real unpopular, unpopular before you are wrong. But, you know, I agree that they have more enforcement, we need more people, so...
Yes.
You know, but I think that is something that we can point against.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I have to say something now.
Before you get more zoning officers, maybe you should use the one you got. Okay, and by that I mean, have the same list for you, four to the years, maybe more than a decade. Every, the zoning officer, um, I'm writing this, the zoning officer reports to the board of supervisors?
Well, they report to the board of supervisors, but they make their own decision. The board of supervisors can't tell the zoning officer, "You will do this."
Right. And can the, what, is, what, are, is the zoning officer accountable to the board of supervisors? They hire and fire him, right?
Accountable in how he does his job and what he does his job, but not accountable as to what he decides to enforce against. I, I don't think that they can, they're accountable to them to say, "Well, you should have gone against ABC Company and not this poor old lady."
Well, I...
I don't think that.
That's a little different than what I got at the seminar that I, where I sat right next to, and, oh, and Robert, Ron was right here, and I asked that very question to the gentleman that were running the seminar.
Okay, well, what did they?
Ron's opening, and those gentlemen from Penn State said, yes, they will hire and fire the supervisor. That's accountable there too, to the board of supervisors. Now, my point is only this. I ask Jake directly, do you receive a report of the zoning officer as, as supervisor? Do you receive a report at the end of every month? As his activities, as the way he does?
Certainly on new permits, um, especially if she's in any other report, that new permit's branded and categorized.
Do you have an opportunity to sit with him every month? On a regular basis?
There's no set time, but at any point, you know, acceptable. Why, I can think, I, I can't speak to my, my colleagues, but...
Would there be any reason this body to be able to meet with the zoning officer on a regular basis? I don't know what it is he's doing in terms of...
Maybe invite him to come, but, but we don't hire him.
So, there's no way we can do that? We have no power?
And we've invited him in the past.
You don't have the power, but if the board of supervisor's direction to meet with the planning commission once a month, now he's gotta be with the planning commission once a month. Or have to do, or the hiring has to give him that direction.
What I'm hearing you say, was my interpretation, is should the zoning officer be doing more than what he's doing by enforcing the current ordinances?
Yes. Did I say yes? Oh, I did. I said yes.
So, my, my next question is, what do we have in our ordinances or zoning that is somewhat close to them?
Nothing.
So, how can he be enforcing something that we don't have?
No, I'm talking about everything else.
Talking about anything, anything else.
That's a bit of a tangent now.
Yeah, you're talking about two different issues.
That's a bit of a tangent. We're talking about this, and I was...
So, you're talking about...
Why would you add something like this when the guy's not even enforcing?
Well, that was my email that I sent out. It said, "This is all well and good, but if we're not gonna enforce it, it's just wasted paper."
No, it's not wasted paper. You put it in, and if not, then it's up to the supervisors to maybe get a new zoning officer.
Oh, it's, okay. I, I just wanted to strike, put the whole...
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
'Cause I, yeah, so I, I'm gonna look into, you know, whether or not more people, I mean, yes, I know there are existing systematic problems. Uh, I will decline to speak about the individual occupiers that offers us a, a hell of a, but, I will say, um, that we do see the need for more people. I will also say, for having one cop, that's only five hundred people, so...
Probably more than that in reality.
Well, yes, that's...
Oh, maybe more like ninety five, or whatever.
Yeah, we'll see. I'm excited to see what the census, uh, gives us. Um, but anyway, but my next point was gonna be, like this, and you guys have ideas, perhaps maybe you spend some time at your next meeting or another meeting, citing the ideas that you wanna see, and then the board can have, you know, John or Ron's draft to that effect. That way, we don't have the supervisors, I mean, this is, this is an issue that's initiated here, and I think it'd be good to see whoever has this person and something tangible onto the board.
On, on that note, I do think any conversation we have around the zoning ordinance that involves a zoning officer, 'cause we, or any future zoning officers are at the forefront of implementing them. So, they're gonna be the best people to, suited to talk about that, which is why I tend to disagree with you. We wanna have that, that communication, so there's a relevant reason to have the zoning officer here when we're having any of these discussions.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and, and, you know, for that reason, you know, I think that's something that we're gonna be talking about, because I, I think that, uh...
Well, I'm gonna say this. I, I would like to put this back on the agenda for next month. And I would like it that we would have the zoning officer come join us in this discussion for me, please. But I would like, 'cause I would like to talk about this particular thing.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, I will talk this, this, uh, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and perhaps to include on the agenda, not just this, specific, but in general enforcement.
Well, let's talk about this first. Let's talk about adding a new thing. Yeah, let's, I wanna talk about, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too far afield, depending on what else comes in in the, in, within the next month.
Right.
But I'd like to talk about this, this part first, 'cause it is a missing piece that we do not have, sort of in a nuisance fact.
And I know that we, one of the things we don't do, and one of the things I kept meaning to do when I was in your chair, uh, was that, uh...
You're looking back?
Uh, is to have a, a, a keying, uh, that's a work section of this body, where we sit down and call it an agenda meeting, where we sit down and we talk about the things that ought to be on the agenda. And I just, I can remember pretty much everybody at this table with one exception has said at least one time or another, "Why?" You know, keep, keep responding. All we do is respond.
No, I, I've put things on the agenda before, and I've knocked them off before, too.
That's true. So, so, is there, uh, would that be valuable to you? Is what from your members?
I actually wouldn't, I actually wouldn't mind it, because ultimately, when the agenda gets sent around, I'm the one who's been, sends around that this is what I, 'cause I've done that before, where I've added the agenda that this is really what I'd like to, to, to talk about in this order. That's fine with me. You can send it to me. Everybody has, uh, email chain.
You wanna just do it that way?
Yeah, do it that way.
A suggestion box?
Yeah, that's fine with me. That's fine.
That's fine, okay.
Because it's not on the agenda, doesn't mean we can't talk about it, if there is a new business category, we can bring things up.
I have myself, I have another motion. I note to you, Scott, that you're making a motion to table, put it off for next May, which is the zoning officer.
Uh, yeah, I'll call it that, I'll make that motion, yes, anybody second it?
Second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Thanks, Mitch, hope you come back. Okay. That's all right, see you next month.
Making a motion to adjourn?
All right. Any other comments?
Only one, which is, thank you, Scott, for handling this meeting that we did tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm in public tone now.
That is like public.
There was, there, there was announced, but there was...
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah.
No, that was on the agenda.
You guys have any comments? It's better than a reality show, isn't it?
I'm telling you, this, this cheap theater here in the, in the Poconos, huh?
If you get one of those GoPros, you can, you can submit on YouTube.
It is on YouTube, by the way.
We are on YouTube.
If you're on binge watching, there's a selection of... Can I hear Mike Sanders?
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Word turns.
Who did what motion?
My motion.